Welcome back. Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Will you do the roll call, please?
Counselor Mackey.
Present.
Counselor Gamble.
Present.
Counselor Burley.
Present.
Counselor Carlton.
Present.
Warden McQueen.
Present.
Counselor Desai.
Present.
Counselor Patterson.
Present.
Counselor Hicks.
Dear.
Counselor Clumpus.
Present.
Counselor Kivany.
Present.
Counselor Boddy. Counselor O'Leary.
Present.
Counselor Woodbury.
Present.
Counselor Millen.
Present.
Counselor Sampson.
Present.
Counselor Potter.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
Thank you.
So seeing. All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any declaration or became their interest to the members around the table today? Sure. If one does have them, you can declare at that time. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the minutes of January 23rd? Member Burley, member Desai, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the Committee, Council and Committee of the Whole meeting, sorry, closed session of January 23rd? Member Hutchinson, member Millen, any discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried. I'm calling everybody member. I'm thinking about the Committee of Adjustment. It's council. I need another set of mover and a seconder for the special committee of the whole for the minutes of February 7th. Counselor Patterson and Counselor Kivany, any discussion on those set of minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried. Do we have any enclosed sessions? Nobody's okay. So reports. We have the reports from the Board of Health. Counselor Patterson, do you wish to speak to those?
Dr. Era is here.
Oh, Dr. Era? Okay, very good. Come on up. I didn't see you back there.
I was working for a motion.
All right. I need a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Woodbury, Counselor O'Leary. All right. Motion's on the floor.
It was scheduled for January 31st. The appointment was delayed to late February with no specific appointment related to other appointment related to the wardens meeting on the same day. So there was a reason for the delay. We're ready for the consultation and as soon as I submit it to the ministry, I would update the council about it, the meeting after, just related to confidentiality of the submission for competitive advantage. The second item is related to internal restructuring. It was implemented over the past few weeks. We had restructuring in the health unit. Three phases started in October, ended in January, and all in all, it was a step closer to the Centre of Excellence of rural public health. The termination part of it is never an easy time, however, all in all, the rest of the process, whether it's portfolio change or senior management adjustment, was well perceived by frontline staff, specifically preserving frontline staff positions. So I believe it's going to position us for success going forward to the Centre of Excellence. So that's my update. If you have any questions.
Any questions from council members? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of that? That is carried. So we have three bylaws that are here. Does anybody wish to pull one of those to be separately voted on? Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would like to pull 5078-20. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to start with, prior to Friday's budget meeting, we had a presentation from representatives from the BMRA. One of their key asks or requests was that the county needs to invest in its aging infrastructure. What they also mentioned was that if the county is unwilling to invest in our infrastructure, that we need to consider a moratorium, and this is an exact quote, "The county should no longer be approving or accepting development applications, subdivisions, put a moratorium and a freeze where possible on development." Yet, at the end of Friday's meeting, I did bring up a motion to increase the amount that we were putting away to asset management from 1% to 1.7%, which did not pass at that time. So the question I have then, Mr. Warden, is as a body here, are we more willing to put a moratorium on development than we are to invest in our aging infrastructure? I understand the comments that staff made with regards to newer data coming later this year. At the same time, I'd also like to point out, Mr. Warden, that the new data will most likely not call for decreased investment in our infrastructure. I invite all of all council members to go through the 2016 Asset Management Plan, which was prepared by Public Sector Digest, because it has some very, some interesting statistics in there. Between 1950 and 1969, the county invested $15 million in their bridges and culverts. The corresponding figure from 2000 to when the study, the report was written is $14 million. The three long-term care facilities that the county runs accounts for 55% of the total asset value of the county buildings, and 53% of county buildings are in poorer to very poorer condition. 51% of the county's vehicle fleet is in poorer to very poorer condition. The average health grade for our asset classes is a C, which really isn't too bad when you consider that the average financial capacity grade for our asset classes is an F. Going from the report, this means that we are, and this is a quote, "significantly underfunding short-term, medium-term, and long-term infrastructure requirements based on existing fund allocations," funding allocations, end quote. I'll end with this, Mr. Warden. The legend of Icarus is used very often as a reminder that you don't fly too close to the sun. An often forgotten lesson of that legend is that you also don't fly too close to the sea lest the dampness of the sea clogs your wings. We need to get away from the dampness of the sea. As such, Mr. Warden, I'd like to move an amendment to the motion that we amend the bylaw by bringing asset management contribution to 1.7% from the 1% presented.
Counselor Robinson, you wish to speak to that?
Not to this specifically at this time, but I do want to just point out that later in the agenda, I will be declaring a conflict of interest with regard to Grey Roots Museum and Archives, and I just want, and I am speaking to the Integrity Commissioner at this point, who's suggested that I mention this to council. So with regard to the overall budget, I want to identify that as it's not a conflict of interest, it's an interest that is being discussed with him.
So we'll counsel Robinson. That'll probably be more in Committee of the Whole.
Fair enough.
And I will be calling for that at that time.
Thank you much, very much, Mr. Warden. I think, I find this a rather interesting amendment. I'm a bit torn on this, frankly. The, I think the rate payers from the Blue Mountain, it's a very, first let me back up a bit. There are very few rate payer groups, I would argue, that would come forward and argue at a council or a public meeting to raise the taxes unless there was something urgent to be done. I'm not sure that their message was that we should globally raise the taxes, but they would be hopeful that more of the infrastructure spending that the county does happens in Blue Mountain. And we're going to hear another item in Committee of the Whole today that will speak to the challenges that the Blue Mountains feels it's facing as it relates to that expenditure money and the flow of money between the town and the county and vice versa. I don't disagree with you that there's a huge need to increase spending in infrastructure since frankly, infrastructure in the area that we happen to see is potentially going to severely limit growth, which by the way, is fueling darn near most of the tax levy increase that you're considering in this particular motion. In the absence of growth in this county, tax increases would be huge. The rate would be much higher. Growth is funding the demand for spending, and infrastructure needs to be there to support that growth, or you will, as my colleague to my left of me said in the last meeting, you will kill, you'll kill the golden goose that's laying the egg, or the leg. So I would be interested to hear again what that 0.7 increase would mean to the levy, but I would be reluctant to support this unless there was a particular increase in spending that dealt with the position that was put forward by the rate pairs, which is that spending in infrastructure is not occurring proportionately as it should to that particular part of the county being the Blue Mountains. So I guess my question, Mr. Warden, is I need to be reminded again what the 0.7 increase does to the levy.
Thank you for that, Counselor Sampson. I'm going to go to our Director, Kevin Wepler. We sort of had that number the other day, and I don't know if you can follow up or come on up to the podium and just talk about that, what that means. And while that happens, Madam CEO.
Just to comment about the Asset Management Plan. The Asset Management Plan that we have at this time is, was a first cut at an Asset Management Plan. And I think what we have all, and I'm sure you've seen it in your own municipalities, what we understand is that in order to get a true picture of what the requirements are, you need a much more in-depth and detailed assessment of both the assumptions that underpin that, as well as some clear definitions about what an asset is and how you establish its useful life. That is why we are making that significant commitment this year to work with Public Sector Digest to really develop the next phase of an Asset Management Plan that will get into those details. Is a road just a road, or is a road the top of the road in the subsurface part of the road? And what is the useful life of that? And are they all exactly the same, or are some of them have, depending on when they were constructed, have very different useful lives? So I just take a little bit of issue with, and I know it's the best information that we have at the time, that what's, the ratings are in the Asset Management Plan, but I think when we talked about that, we all recognized that that was a first cut, and we have an awful lot of additional work to do to really refine those numbers to get a truer picture of what our situation is.
Thank you, Madam CEO. Kevin? Just before, is there any questions to what the CEO was speaking with or about, before I go back to Kevin? Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Kevin.
The question was, what does a 1.7 mean to that budget? It would be an additional $400,000, $500,000 would be added to the taxation levy amount for the budget, so, and therefore it would increase the budget from a 1.26% then to a
So going back to Counselor Sampson, is that, do you have a follow-up of that? Or that was one of your questions? You were wanting clarity of what that amount was?
That's clear.
Okay. Counselor Hicks?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Strikes me that we may have essentially a point of order here. Feels like we're having the same discussion that we had at the last meeting. And I appreciate that Madam Clerk was not at the last meeting, but I just wonder, are we on the right track here? Should this, is this even proper, the discussion that we are having?
Madam Clerk?
So in fact, we did, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I have reviewed the minutes, and as much as the minutes reflect the discussions of the budget meeting last week, the bylaw is the final step, and if there are amendments that are required or requested by council for that, then they can be done because this is the final phase of the adoption of the
Counselor Hicks?
So essentially, we can read debate, the debate that we had at the budget meeting?
Essentially, the budget bylaw is the final step, and if there are discussions that need to happen on the budget bylaw, because it hasn't passed yet, yes, those can happen again today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any other questions or queries with regards to Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to respond to Counselor Sampson and the Madam CEO. To respond to Counselor Sampson, I do take the point that not many people would come forward and ask for increased taxes, at least not in the five short years that I've been on council. I've never heard of that. At the same time, we are also elected to make tough decisions, and we have to be able to make tough decisions if we know that they are in fact correct decisions. Your point towards more infrastructure money being spent in the town of Blue Mountains, the town of Blue Mountains was used as an example because they made the presentation. Any municipality here can make the argument that they require more infrastructure spending. Grey Highlands, for example, can ask for more infrastructure spending based on the fact that we are the gateway into the town of Blue Mountains if you're coming from Toronto. So I'll use a quote again from the presentation on Friday, "The rising tide does lift all boats." To the Madam CEO, I do take very well your comment on this being the first cut. What I would also like to point out, though, is Grey Highlands did their first cut in 2013, at which point the recommendation was 1.5% each year for 10 years. We did our second cut in 2016, which increased the allocation to 1.7% over 20 years. So, which is why what I'm suggesting prepares us and puts us in a better place going forward because I'm fairly confident that we won't be, we won't be told you can go easy for the next two years. So that's the other point. And to respond to Counselor Hicks, if I may, Mr. Warden, I did bring new information to make this amendment, which I hadn't brought forward on Friday, which is why I felt this merited the discussion again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. Madam CEO, do you have any response to that?
No, that's fine.
Okay. So I guess to you, Kevin, I guess one thing is, we are going back out to hire a company to review our current Asset Management Plan. Do you have any comments there with following up from the CEO?
Yeah, and that council did decide in 2019, and it was a multi-year project that we, that was approved to hire Public Sector Digest to work through that. So it was a multi-year work plan with them. So I just, I would like to say is, in a two-tier government system, maybe I shouldn't let it impact me, but I try to consider too, I think there's local municipalities that have their own infrastructure that they're trying to deal with as well, so I'm trying to be, I think, fair as best I can, and that's why I was trying to follow the Asset Management Plan recommendation. Some of the marks that are in that Asset Management Plan, for example, that we know we need to work on is, we didn't get very good marks for our equipment and fleet, but I would argue, just because it was based on age-based conditions, I believe our maintenance and our replacement schedules are very adequate for our fleet, and I would think our fleet is one that it's, that our transportation department and staff are very happy with. So even though we got a failing mark for it, it just indicated to us that we need to do more work with conditions and reporting and stuff to improve the data we have in our Asset Management Plan to give a better picture of what. You totally could be right that we could be back here once that's done, and it says we need more investment in roads and bridges. You could totally be correct, but we knew we have some work to do on that Asset Management Plan.
I know from our revision of our Asset Management Plan, we realized that some things could be spread over a longer period from when it was originally, so there are always realistic things that you're always getting as you update your plan and that, so.
And then, and that county did that in 2019 as well. Our Asset Management staff brought in a report here, and we reviewed all our thresholds and our life cycles and that, and there was changes made, if you recall. I know on a road basis, we did extend those a lot more than the OMBI guide had recommended to us when we created this, so, and that's going to take a bit of time to see the impact in that because, but we're working away at this.
Thank you, Kevin. Just before I go to Counselor Sampson, the seconder of the motion, Counselor Millen, do you have any to speak to this motion at all? Do you wish to speak to it?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Sampson?
Just a question to you, Mr. Warden. What is then the timing of the revised Asset Management Plan? Is that going to happen as a report back to this council in this year? And if so, would then that be in time for reconsideration of the capital allocation that's required in the fiscal 2020 budget, 2021 budget?
Kevin?
I'll have to go back and look at the timelines around that. It was all geared to meet the Regulation 588-17 by the province, and I believe that's 2021, that's the timeline on that, so that was really the target of it, so, but I'm sure we could get and look at that and work with consultant, and we could have them come in here and speak and give you an update of where we're headed with it or something, but I'd have to go back and review that, to be honest.
Any more comment there, Counselor Sampson? Okay. Any other comments from any other counselors, other, before I go back to you, Counselor Desai? Is there anybody else wish to speak to this motion? Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just in closing, I want to be very clear that this is not a slight against staff at all. It's very simply an increased, a call for increased investment in our infrastructure. I understand staff have made adequate efforts, and they've done the asset management, and they've followed the recommendation. This is going above and beyond that, so it's not a slight at staff at all.
Thank you for that clarity. I don't think that was intent, or the feeling from that, but thanks for the clarity. Any further discussion? I know back with Warden Wright, maybe Counselor Miller, Counselor Millen can help me out here, but I thought back around 2010, 11, when Counselor, or Warden Wright was a warden at the time, there was something came forward, and I thought in that budget, there was some money started then to put aside in that budget toward asset management, and that was even before we did a plan. So I know we have been sort of thinking about that. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Kevin?
That goes back to the discussion on the upload of the social costs off the property tax and what, you know, what the county did at that time, those upload savings, we were putting money into reserve for future infrastructure. But in the same time, we reconsidered that after we were seeing the impact of the OMPF reductions that were happening at the local municipalities. So in essence, we reduced that transfer reserve out of the county budget and provided room in the local municipal budgets at that time so that they could replace that tax with their loss of OMPF funding. So I don't believe that happened in very many counties across the province, and, but it was, we recognized that there was a loss of grant funding that was happening at the local level based on the upload that was happening at the county level, so that's how we did that, and there was a negative budget that went through in that year.
All right. So we have the motion on the floor to amend the bylaw. Any further conversation? Seeing none, all in favor? Three, four. Opposed? That motion for the amendment is lost. So now we have the original bylaw. That's back on the, now, do I need a mover and a seconder for that one?
You have one, you want to confirm that they want to move it still. It's Counselor Desai.
Okay. Counselor Desai and Counselor Hicks, are you still prepared to move that motion? That's right, okay. All right. Discussion on the 5078-20 bylaw. Any other discussion? Counselor Desai? No. You're dropping the gun here? Okay. Seeing there's no other discussion, all in favor of that bylaw? That is carried. Thank you. All right. Good news and celebrations. Before I open up the floor, I want to take this opportunity to thank our CAO and Savannah and staff for the visionary part of the Suddenham School. As we've heard the announcement this week with Georgian College and the expansion of the four-year program, I think there is certainly kudos to you, Madam CEO and staff, for that vision of convincing and talking to council with regards to buying that school, and we know now that when that is, that program is expanding, they will be expanding into that school. So I think we should give our staff a round of applause for that. All right. I'll open up the floor, and that was a good news story the other day, I tell you. Who would like to, who would like to go first? There's got to be some good news out there. Come on. It's snowing. Jeez, you're all good newsed out? All right. Jeez, no celebrations? There's got to be something. Valentine's coming up.
What about Family Day?
Family Day? Yeah. What's happening with Family Day? So Counselor Desai, you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As with every Family Day for the past few years, Mark Dalrec Committee will be doing another Family Day celebration at King Edward Park. It's a lot of fun. There's a snowman building, snow person, snow thing building contest. A snow structure building contest. There is also a skate time that is sponsored by the committee, for those who know how to skate, and for those who are not afraid to, you know, make a bit of a fool out of themselves. So yeah, it's Monday, Family Day at King Edward Park in Mark Dalrec, right by the library.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. And your name tags are hanging off there, so you might want to straighten yourself up. Counselor Potter, and then Counselor Robinson.
I have a couple of things. One is that Mayor Swever is recovering at home and has been, even been out and about a little bit, so we're quite pleased with the progress he's making. He hasn't yet, he's probably watching, so I can get away with saying this, but he's, he hasn't yet gotten to the point where he's bothering anybody, but we're sure he soon will, and then we'll know he's really on the road to recovery. The second thing is that tomorrow night, we have our first ever We Love Blue Gala, which is the opening fundraising event for our new community foundation. One of the chairs is sitting to my right, and it's, we hope is going to mean bringing in a lot more money for some of our community organizations.
Thanks for that, Counselor Potter, and I'm sure, if we all smile, I'm sure your mayor is watching us today. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I would just like to let everyone know that the West Grey Chamber of Commerce, the Durham BIA, and the West Grey Durham Lions will be having a frazzle fest. It'll be this entire Family Day weekend, starting February 14th and ending Monday, February 17th. A lot of events, like snow sculptures, there is trivia night, family dance, board games, even a breakfast on Monday morning. So if you go to the Facebook page for Durham BIA or the Chamber, you'll see the schedule. Hope people can come out.
Sounds like fun. Anybody else have any good news and celebrations? All right. Well, I know there's a particular buck and dough going on Saturday night in Grey Highlands, but we'll leave it at that, and you wish to talk to me later, we can have that conversation, so. But it is Valentine's tomorrow, isn't it? Tomorrow. So I saw some roses here today on somebody's desk, so that's nice to see. So. Tomorrow. So I saw, I saw some roses here today on somebody's desk, so that's nice to see. So hopefully, everybody certainly looks after that day. Chocolates and flowers, right, Councillor Millen?
Yeah.
All right. You guys are a tough crowd today, I tell you. I need one more motion to adjourn. Councillor Desai, Councillor Robinson. All in favor? That's carried.